Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. It is nine o'clock on Wednesday, June 5th. I'm calling the budget workshop to order. And before we get into it, a couple of comments from my position. In the past, and I'm going to say this as well at the meeting this evening, in the past couple of meetings that we've had, when we've had public comment, I personally believe that we've had too many inappropriate comments that are being made. This commission in this city is built on tolerance and acceptance. We do not discriminate in any form or fashion. And first of all, commissioners, I want to apologize because as your mayor, I have the gavel. I was caught off guard at the last meeting, and I should have taken immediate action. And I know that you will back me as well. It's a fine line that we walk with the First Amendment rights of freedom of speech. But at the same time, I expect everyone that's testifying before this commission to act in a civil, respectful, and quite honestly, an adult manner. And so as we move forward today, both with the workshop and with the meeting, I'm asking everyone that's testifying for this commission to act and conduct themselves in that manner. I just felt compelled, and it's been bothering me for the past two weeks, actually, since the last time we had the meeting. And I no longer will put up with it as mayor. I'm going to do a better job keeping our public testimony, and quite honestly, ourselves, but we've been doing a very good job to make sure that this is a respectful body, and it represents the values of this commission and of this city. Okay? With that, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Mr. Mayor, we don't have any agenda modifications. At your discretion, we can provide the presentation now and then take public comment. That may be productive before you have your deliberation.
I think it would be very productive, commissioners, if you agree that we go ahead and have the budget presentation, and then we'll go into public comment before we have our discussion as well. Wonderful. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me queue it up first. I'd like to just give an overview. Robert and Robert Wigan, our Director of Resource Management, will walk us through the presentation. He's joined by Assistant City Manager, Raoul Lavin. They are experts, joined by many of our other experts in our Budget and Resource Management Office. But, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, it's my pleasure to submit the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020. These are not easy budgets. As we all know, there's lots of competing priorities as we put the total budget together. This is our operating budget, and I want to express my appreciation for your leadership and vision for our community. We've been working together as a group for the last seven or so months, maybe eight months. Time flies. And you've clearly indicated your priorities to us. That is very helpful as we craft these proposed budgets for your consideration. We have taken into account the priorities that you have set, which are public safety, investment in infrastructure, quality of life, including the impact of poverty and economic development. The overall proposed budget that you have for consideration today is $727 million, and it represents the 14 funds that we manage, not limited to the general fund. Lots of discussion centers around the general fund. These other funds include electric, natural gas, water, sewer, our building code inspection fund, golf, airport, Star Metro, solid waste, stormwater, fire, and even our cemetery operation. Honestly, I had to read that list because I attempt to memorize it from time to time, but clearly you can see and hear the breadth of the operations that you're responsible for and that we carry out the mission of every day. I'd like to point out that the general fund is proposed, and that's the heart of our city, to be $160,900,000. That's a 1.29% increase relative to our current fiscal year 19 budget. It includes $59 million for our police and $24.2 million for Parks and Recreation. I singled those out because those are big departments within our general fund, and they're important parts of our operation and important to our city. We are recommending, and you have given clear guidance, that we hold the millage rate, the tax, property tax rate, at 4.1 mills. Included in this budget, we are holding firm on operating costs in the general fund at 2019 levels. In other words, they do not increase. The proposed budget does provide for a 3% increase for city employees, including those in our bargaining units, making sure that we honor those CBA agreements. It also includes $3.1 million approximately for human services that's split between our contribution to CHSP and other agencies. Today, specifically, we, at the conclusion of our presentation and at the conclusion of your discussion, we're asking that you accept the fiscal year 20 budget plan and the proposed FY '19 amendments that we have that are timely, and also vote to maintain the tentative millage rate of 4.1 mills for the city of Tallahassee and a millage rate of 1 mill for the Downtown Improvement Authority, and finally, schedule public hearings to begin at 6:00 PM in City Hall on September 11th and September 25th. So with that framing, I would like to turn it over to Robert Wigan to walk us through the presentation.
Thank you, Reese. Good morning, commissioners, and officials.
Good morning.
We've got some very important decisions to make today, and I appreciate you taking the time at this early hour. This will be our sixth meeting on the budget. We take lessons learned from the previous fiscal year, bring you back quarterly updates to inform us on where we are currently, and then develop assumptions. Some of those are known, some of those are unknown, and then as we get the best information, we bring that back and speak about that so that we're transparent and open and get good public comment on the budget. All with a goal for a balanced budget across all funds to meet your mission, vision, and values, and our community priorities. The goal of today's meeting is to make some final decisions on our operating budget. That operating budget then informs if there are any programmatic changes, what we can invest in infrastructure and in our utility system to keep that up. We do have an opportunity today to talk about the operating budget. We're going to take the opportunity in July then, once we have gotten this feedback, to bring back a balanced capital budget in July, all with the effort to be the national leader in public service. As City Manager Goad mentioned, there are 14 operating funds. The combined and balanced amount of their revenues and expenses is $727 million. I think we've lost our, I didn't get a clicker, and I lost somebody on the...
Go ahead, Robert. We'll get it advanced.
Yep. Thank you, Matt. The pie charts that we'll show you in a few seconds, ideally, show our $727 million operating budget among 14 funds. You've got it before you, but I'll give it a second to let everybody else who's looking on the screens catch up. Fantastic. One of the challenges of moving a meeting from 1:00 to 9:00 AM, so appreciate your patience. The two pie charts that are shown here for the fiscal year 20 operating budget, as mentioned, represent the 14 operating funds, combined balance of $727 million. If you look on the left, the operating revenue by revenue type shows our 14 operating funds and those revenue sources. The predominant source of those revenues is charges for services. We operate utilities and, based on consumption and use, charge for those services. As the most significant revenue, I think it's critical to recognize that our utility rates and our property taxes have been compared against other communities. And when we compare the municipal cost comparison and the business cost comparison, we're either the lowest for residential costs for taxes and rates for utilities, or in the bottom two or three of comparable communities. As we go to the left of the chart, charges for services closely followed by other sources, that represents primarily our general fund transfer in the darker blue tile. There are some other, there's ad valorem taxes, of course, which we mentioned, the 4.1 mills that we're holding the line on, some intergovernmental revenue and other revenue sources. It's our half-cent sales tax, our state revenue sharing, and then we also realize some interest and reflect capitalized overhead when we do projects to recoup all the costs and fully cost those projects. So the pie on the left represents the $727 million for the 14 operating funds. To the right are our operating expenditures by fund, and they should be familiar as the funds that Reese mentioned. Our electric, $282 million. The general fund, $160.9 million. Various underground utilities, water, sewer, stormwater, and then our fire services and solid waste and transit services. I think it's, these expenditures are representative of our 2,861 staff members, personnel services, the benefits they receive, and then holding line and/or consumer price index matching for our utilities to keep up with the cost of living. The balance of any expenditures would then be for investment in infrastructure and improvement in our utility system. On the next slide, our general fund budget reflects a commitment to police, roads and streets, sidewalks, parks and recreation, and human services. Similarly, as the previous slide, on the left, we're demonstrating the revenues for the general fund. We mentioned $160.9 million general fund revenue. That's predominantly supported by ad valorem taxes. About 30% of our revenues for the general fund is in ad valorem taxes, followed closely by utility transfers. Very pertinent reason that we're in the business of providing those utilities is to provide that support to our general fund for police, parks and recreation, human services. Also reflected there, I mentioned the half-cent sales tax, the state revenue sharing, and then federal grants follow in the other tiles for our revenue sources. Our general fund expenditure tile, the pie chart to the right, represents our police department, about 37% of expenditures. The parks and recreation, $24.1 million, followed by a transfer that we make to the CDA as a consolidated dispatch agency, also a pass-through that we do with our CRAs. When we receive the ad valorem revenue, we pass the revenues for those TIF payments onto the CRAs, and then as well as a general fund transfer that we make in order to fund maintenance and repair services for our roads, streets, sidewalks. You know, this budget translates into meeting new priorities. You know, we're efficient, we're effective, we're within 1.2% of what our previous general fund budget was, but we recognize that with those efficiencies and effectiveness, that there are new responsibilities, new services that we want to provide. Within the realm of public safety, we've talked about doing advanced life support service enhancements. We're engaged in the community and doing outreach to promote neighborhoods, youth and young adult engagement, most importantly, the tempo program, and then our recreation programs for youth. Infrastructure investment, we've made a commitment to completion of 10 sidewalks, projects per year over the next five years, to recognize the importance of walkability in neighborhoods and safety in neighborhoods. Site selection is ongoing, and planning is ongoing for a public safety complex, as well as planning for use of the Northwood Mall property. On the quality of life side, we guide city growth policies and planning with a clean energy commitment. That's going to be a commitment for the next 35 years. A goal of new electric buses to meet that commitment, and then public safety, infrastructure, investment, and outreach to unemployed and underemployed youth, a recognition of a very important responsibility that we also have. And then in the area of economic development, continued recognition that the city is a vibrant, livable city that provides outstanding services, utilities, and infrastructure. As we develop this budget, you know, we recognize that staff works hard, that they have a great responsibility for our, and impact on our success. They are what makes us efficient and effective and allows us to do these additional things, but then we look further and realize how connected to the community they are. Not only do they, on a daily basis, do the work that they do, but we realize that they volunteer their time, which means that moves them from just having a job to being a public servant. And it was very refreshing to see the number of organizations that they're involved in, and so we tried to identify some of those. I have a feeling that, you know, the city makes a commitment to provide volunteer service leave. If they donate two hours, we provide six hours, which is a critical policy to support that effort. And I imagine, though, that that just scratches the surface of what they do on their own time and within their own family and within the community itself. In the same vein, you know, of volunteerism in human services, the city funds over $2.1 million for a competitive outcome-driven evaluation process, the community human service partnership that we've talked about before. The program uses trained citizens, citizen volunteers, to review all applications and then present their findings to both commissions in a partnership to fund human service agencies. We're in the second year of a two-year cycle with January 2020 beginning a new cycle. That new cycle is an application period for fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22 funding. And so we've made a commitment to those human service agencies of that $2.1 million, and it's reflected in the fiscal year '20 budget. Where there's additional need or requests that can't be met by that CHSP process, we recommend a funding for outside agencies of $1,038,000. At some level, this is at the same level as 2019 for 2020. What's unique about it is we've received additional requests for funding. We'll move funding for 25 agencies in fiscal year '19 to funding 27 requests in fiscal year '20. And we've done that by either recommending increases or decreases to add those two additional agencies. You know, our concept in looking at the outside agencies was how do we prioritize efforts to address youth, their success in education, and then ultimately, the effects of poverty on the city's south side and Frenchtown neighborhoods. This provides an overview of our recommendations to add the two new opportunities for children and families and improve poverty. As you look at this chart, there's some bolding and some underlining and italicizing, and that's where we've tried to demonstrate where the changes have taken place. As we went through the decision-making process, those items that are in italics or in bold have been either, the bolded ones have been increased, the italicized ones have been decreased. In some cases, it was an easy decision. We were able to match what other partners were doing in our funding decision. Mental health, Sable Palm. In others, we found that we had provided one-time funding in fiscal year '19, and so could reinstall that or invigorate that in our process. And that, a couple of those include, as I look down the list, one-time funding was provided for Whole Child Leon, and so we were able to step that back and then put that back into the pot. We then had to make the hard decision to, how do we fund these additional requests? And we made the decision that we would selectively look at different areas and reduce their funding by 25%. That enabled $105,000 in additional funding, and that's represented in the $1,038,000 that's on this slide. I can, you know, there are two slides that follow this. This is probably the most important discussion or conversation today. I can either pause here or go on and finish the last two slides that are about our next steps, and then we can...
Let's go ahead and finish the presentation, Robert.
Thank you. One important consideration that we wanted to raise at this time is, is we're going to be going through a truth and millage process. As you well know, we've committed to a 4.1 millage rate. That millage rate needs to be advertised to each, to each member of our city. There are statutorily required steps and deadlines that we have to meet, and so we've laid out some of those critical elements to talk about those as early as possible. You know, the city will adopt both the city and the Downtown Improvement Authority millage, the 4.1 mills, and a 1.0 mills. There's an August 4th deadline to do that by. We have a choice of either adopting that at this meeting or doing it in the July meeting in order to advertise to the public by August 24th. In addition to those advertising requirements, the statutory requirements for the property appraiser and tax collector, there's some specific steps that we'll go through in September. They're very, we try to allow for more of an informal approach with common and support of whatever requests that you make. In this case, there's a very formal, and I guess I'm being hesitant because it's a long, repeated process where there's about 15 to 20 steps that we take for each, the city and the DIA, and those all have to be read into the record, and what seems a very repetitive process will happen in September. Fortunately, we have the city attorney who will provide support in walking us through that process, but I just wanted you to be aware that if we're going to talk about changes, June and July is the time. It gets very complex if we try to do it in September. Not that we can't, but it's a little bit easier now. Some of the next steps, as I'm sure you're aware and as Reese laid out, we recommend that the city commission accept the fiscal year '20 budget plan, and we have one project amendment as presented in the agenda item, and that you have the opportunity to vote to maintain a tentative millage rate of 4.1 mills for the city and 1 mill for the Downtown Improvement Authority. And then as part of that affirmation, you set the schedule for September 11th and 25th 2019 as the dates for the public hearings to begin at 6:00 o'clock at City Hall. We have some other significant dates of July 1st, another workshop July 10th, and then trim notices sent July, August 24th. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions or support any discussion.
Thank you, Robert. Commissioners, I say we go to public comment and then come back for discussion.
All right. Mr. Treasurer Clerk.
Mayor, we do have a number of speakers, probably 10 or so. The first is Elizabeth Emanuel. I will ask each speaker, if you would, at the beginning of your remarks, to provide your name and address for the record, and I will give you a heads-up when you're at about 2 and 1/2 minutes, and then when your time is complete at 3:00.
Ms. Emanuel, it's good to see you. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Good to see you all. We're located at 300 West Pensacola Street in downtown Tallahassee. So, good morning. I am Elizabeth Emanuel. Do I get started? Do I get to go? Just making sure.
You're good.
Yes, there normally is a light there. That may be what you're familiar with seeing, but that's controlled from up here, so you'll just have to wait for me to give you the time.
All right, so I'll just look at you.
Incorrect. He'll let you know when you're at about 30 seconds.
Okay. I'll speak quickly. I'm the CEO of the Downtown Improvement Authority. I know approving the budget is a difficult task ahead of you, and the experts have compiled this $727.8 million budget today. When you look at these significant numbers, the $7,500 that we're asking you to add back into the budget item for the downtown marketplace may not seem important, but for downtown and our average 50-plus vendors, it is. The weekly market is a vital revenue stream. As a vegetarian, I have sat on coolers asking how a local family-owned farm humanely produces their meat and how our market helps keep their farm in business, and it does. There are only a few marketplaces in Tallahassee, a few small efforts to provide access to locally grown goods. At a time when markets in our areas of our community don't know where their location may move to or when they can be open again, the consistent 43 markets we provide is crucial. Provisions Avenue raises bees in their backyard, honey made from pollen that ails us as an effective way to alleviate allergies. They do not have a storefront, but they do have this market. One vendor attends as a family. Their cottage baker gives their 15-year-old daughter the budget to oversee, giving her valuable financial skills. It's an opportunity for her to gain confidence and enhance her social skills. She and her mother told me so. We have Mr. Corker, who operates his produce stand with his grandson, and a young man who at 15 has his license to operate a fish stand while his mother works two jobs. Our community depends on this market for economic development. For a $700 million budget, our full request may not seem like a lot, but it matters to have fresh produce to our downtown, as we do not have a grocery store, a convenience store, or an opportunity to buy tomatoes outside of a restaurant. Adding $7,500 back into the budget for our full request will ensure we have tents and trash pickup. It covers the cost to keep the event safe for the public. It lessens the cost for our vendors. If we get less funding, it will add additional costs to our small businesses, ones at a razor-thin profit margin. If the funding for our marketplace were cut, it would cut their profit. Two restaurants have shut their doors for good downtown this week. It is imperative we support small business and food operators at our marketplace. A stretch of park where you can enjoy stewed chicken from Miss Mary at One Stop Afrique, a cup of coffee from Black Dog, or pick up an inspirational t-shirt from Mr. Gibbs that says "Phenomenal Woman, God's Masterpiece," or a purple and gold boot for the Omega Lamp Lighters, a painting from a renowned artist now faced with caring for her ailing mother who depends on this market for revenue and respite. I am not asking the city to fund the renowned artist that attends. I am asking for the services to help take out the trash. I'm not requesting funding for the gourmet popsicles, but we do need the infrastructure to ensure our event has the tents and parking it needs. I am asking you to support us in our efforts to keep costs down, so when guests arrive, they see a beautifully maintained public space. The market offers anyone a stroll through a showcase of what Tallahassee is all about. Music played by local musicians, samples from local family-owned businesses, international flair where you can buy a Turkish round loaf of bread if he doesn't sell out, traditional West African meals. What was that? Sorry.
You're running out of time.
Okay. Beautiful handmade crafts from our neighbors who are artists, war veterans who are woodworkers, the ability to connect with customers who frequent the market. The Saturday Market provides a taste of what is good about our community. Easy access to opportunities, cultural enrichment, and inclusive atmosphere. It gives vendors a platform that is inexpensive yet vibrant. It is a consistent event ongoing for nearly 20 years that our community depends on.
You're at 3 minutes.
We have not asked for additional funding in over 10 years, and while we very much appreciate the support that you all provide for our marketplace, we hope you fully fund our request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emanuel.
Next speaker is Pat Simmons, and then Heidi Copeland.
Ms. Simmons, good to see you. For those of you that might have joined us a little late and missed my little speech at the beginning, I appreciate all of our public speakers today, operating with the utmost respect for staff and electeds and all of us in the room in keeping the conversation civil. Thank you for setting the example, Ms. Emanuel. Yes, Ms. Simmons, great to see you.
Hello, Mayor Daley. It's good to see you again. Pat Simmons, my address is 4611 Innisheer Drive, Tallahassee. And I want to speak on behalf of the St. Francis Wildlife Association Board, staff, volunteers, and our supporters in thanking the city of Tallahassee for the support you've given us for many years. The amount of support the city's given us has dropped over time, which doesn't, it doesn't destroy us, but it does make things quite difficult. I'm also speaking to you as somebody who personally operates at no debt and who, for the past several years, have worked with staff and board to have the St. Francis Wildlife budget operate evenly. So we appreciate the work that Mr. Wigan's office and y'all do. We are requesting that our funding be up to the level that at least we requested and that has been given to us for the last several years, which is $30,000. The number of animals coming into us has dramatically increased. This year, we saw no slowdown. Normally, in the winter months, it slows down enough for us to thoroughly clean our hospital, which is a large building. All of our outbuildings are cleaned. We didn't even have time to do that this past winter because the animals kept coming in. And a lot of these animals, well over 50%, come from the city of Tallahassee. So we just want to make sure that you know that and know the service that we provide. I'll give you one quick example of a very large raccoon that for about a year to maybe a year and a half had been hanging around the Capitol complex. It eventually was hit by a car, and it was dragging itself around the Capitol complex. The only agency that was able to respond to that animal was St. Francis. Not the Capitol Police, not security at any of the buildings, not the Sheriff's Department. It was only, not any of the animal control agencies, unless it had bitten somebody or harmed somebody, it was going to be us. It did take us about a year of persistence to catch that animal, along with her last batch of babies, and remove them from the Capitol complex. And before that happened, a tourist had been throwing food to her, trying to catch her with his bare hands, and that animal ripped open his trousers. It could have caused a lot of damage to him. We're the only agency that stands between that kind of injury and humanely getting the animal... the animal out of the situation.
You're at about two and a half minutes.
Thank you very much. So, anyway, thank you for the support that you give us. We proudly give our service to the city of Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Heidi Copeland and then Rob Renzi.
It's Copeland, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Heidi Copeland. I live at 3483 Lakeshore Drive in Tallahassee. I'm here in support of Whole Child Leon so that they can keep their funding status quo. For the first, past 13 years, I've worked as an extension agent with the cooperative extension, 10 years of which has been in Leon County. I was introduced to Whole Child Leon early on, and I cannot say all the ways that I've interfaced with them since, starting with their professional network. The Whole Child Leon professional network is a cornerstone of just so many initiatives and partnerships that have started in this community. As the years progress, I've also been able to partner with Whole Child Leon on several grants, some of which try to combat childhood obesity in the community and childhood obesity in some of the title run school, one schools. I've also worked with them on some initiatives to help the health outcomes of people in South City. Part of, but what I'm really most impressed with is the ability to bring together a realm of professionals that hold what they call a child screening two times a year at Children's Medical Services. In fact, from one of these screenings, a child was lifelighted to UF Health because of neurological issues that went undiagnosed by his medical professional. And as we all know, these early intervention services just save everybody money, but more importantly, these early intervention services for youth in the community help the children increase their chances in school, for school success, and for overall life success. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Rob Renzi and then Courtney Atkins.
Mr. Renzi, good to see you. Name and address for the record, please.
Rob Renzi, CEO of Big Ben Cares, 2201 South Monroe Street, Tallahassee, Florida. I made a promise, I was never coming back here to ask for any more money, so I'm not lobbying or asking for any particular agency. We're here to thank you very much for the CHSP process that you have now and the money and funds you've put into that for the last 20 years. What I am concerned about is the additional, the add-on agencies and, and no one in particular, but just to advocate for there to be a process for those agencies. The beauty of CHSP is it puts us all on a living playing field. Everybody has to have the same documentation, the same legal requirements. And some of your added agencies on this, the going outside that process, do they have a 990? Are they registered with the Florida Department of Agriculture? Do they have, are they registered with SunBiz in the state of Florida? There, there needs to be a process to make sure that each one of those agencies that you're giving money to has those things. Some of them do not. So, I'm, I'm not advocating to adding or deleting any funding from anybody, just that there be a consistent process for the people outside the CHSP process. Thank you.
Next speaker is Courtney Atkins and then the next speaker will be Sylvia Smith.
Good morning, Mayor Daley, commissioners and city staff. I'm Courtney Atkins, Executive Director of Whole Child Leon, 1126 Lee Avenue. I thank you and appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about the work of Whole Child Leon. I'd like to start by expressing our gratitude on behalf of the Whole Child Board and staff for the city's support of our work since 2004, when Leon County was first designated a Whole Child community. I have several board members in the room. If you would stand, I really just appreciate you all being here. We also appreciate the 2015, that in 2015, the city recognized our impact, our broadened scope of work, and voted to increase our funding by $25,000. We have appreciated the city's support of $63,800 since 2015. My purpose today is to impress upon you the significant impact a cut in our funding would have on our community, on our children, and on our families. I provided you with information about our work, not unlike what you received from Whole Child Leon in our yearly general revenue agreement and our quarterly reports. I've also included letters of support from our community partners, including Claudia Blackburn at the Leon County Health Department, physicians from the Tallahassee Pediatric Foundation, the University IFS Extension Agency Representative Heidi Copeland, and Talithia Edwards from the Greater Bond Community Neighborhood Association. Because Whole Child is unique from other agencies and programs, I think we are often misunderstood. We spend a lot of time supporting and highlighting the work of our provider partners and perhaps not enough time telling our own story. In a nutshell, Whole Child Leon acts as a catalyst for change. We collect and analyze our community's data and use this information to identify what needs to be done for our children, and then we do it. We don't replicate programs, we connect them. In a nutshell, we act as a catalyst for change. We collect, sorry, said that. We don't provide direct services. We convene the right partners to fund and provide those services, especially those missing from our system of care. Ultimately, Whole Child Leon is an advocacy agency that goes beyond just educating the public. We deliver innovative solutions to address critical gaps in services that protect and promote well-being of our young children. The reports we provide to you and the documents you have in front of you speak to the majority of Whole Child's work in our community. We commonly refer to this work as the BUT4 Whole Child Initiatives. I want to use my last minute to describe two of those BUT4 initiatives that I believe best illustrate.
You actually have about 30 seconds.
Best illustrate our role as convener, connector, and catalyst positively impacting children. The Tallahassee Pediatric Foundation, ELC, and Whole Child Leon established the Pediatric Behavioral Health Navigator Program. It's an integrated program where children are referred by their doctors to have a full bio-psychosocial interview to provide treatment for behavioral mental health disorders. In less than two years, we have had 1,461 children referred by their physician to our program.
You're at three minutes.
The developmental screenings you heard more about earlier, so we have screened 985 children, zero to five.
Ms. Atkins, if you could wrap up your comments.
Okay. In closing, I want you to know we're not afraid of hard work and we're used to working with limited resources. I also want you to know that we take our physical responsibility very seriously. However, with only two staff responsible for coordinating these efforts, we are stretched them.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Sylvia Smith is speaking now and she'll be followed by Amber Tynan.
Ms. Smith, great to see you.
Good morning. Good to see all of you, and I apologize for this being my first visit to the newly elected city commission, and it's exciting to, to look forward to work with you all. The Big Ben Homeless Coalition has served as a community-based development organization for the city of Tallahassee for 20 years. We look to your leadership to help us with the community's five goals around ending homelessness. Those goals are reducing the number of people homeless, reducing the number of days homeless, reducing the new homeless, and reducing returns to homeless. And then the fifth goal is exiting high percentages of people from homelessness to permanent housing. That is done with five services. Outreach, prevention and diversion, emergency shelter, rapid rehousing, and permanent supportive housing. The Big Ben Homeless Coalition is a direct service provider of all five of those services that are recognized nationally as the key to ending homelessness. We specialize in families, veterans, and people with disabilities and histories of chronic homelessness. In 2015, Hope Community converted to low-barrier emergency shelter as part of the community's plan to better provide emergency shelters to families with minor children. Presently, we shelter over 100 children per night with their family caretaker, could be a guardian, sibling, grandparent, or biological parent. We exit 70% of those families to permanent housing, which is an exemplary success rate. We have 60 children every night who are under six years old. In the last two years, we've developed an early childhood screening program with zero investment of dollars from any funder. So, we are innovating to better meet the needs of that new population. Back in the first decade, we would only have about 30 children because we had a dorm for single men and a dorm for single women. So, we've had to step into a role of meeting the needs of that number of children. And if you've been to Hope Community, you know that it has needs. We spend our dollars on staff, supplies, utilities, maintenance and repair, and food. And maintenance and repair at, at 15 years of operation is starting to be a significant issue, not starting to be. If you've been there, you know. The buildings need painting and there's never going to be dollars for that anytime in my ability to protect our budget. So, we do ask you to restore that. It's, it's a small amount of money, it's $10,000 from the general revenue.
You have about 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. And I do want to thank staff and all of you for, for just entertaining that request. We, we are not in a position to absorb cuts to our operating budget and continue to maintain service levels and, and outcomes. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Amber Tynan and then Morgan Evers.
It's Tynan.
Good morning. Thank you, everyone. Amber Tynan, 244 Tim Gamble Place, 32308. I want to thank you all for the opportunity, commissioners and Mayor Daley, to meet and/or speak with you over the last few weeks. I know at your May 15 budget workshop, we were unable to participate because of our annual conference, so we do apologize for that, but thank you for your time. And I know Elaine, we're meeting next week. But specifically to address the request for maintaining funding specifically for outside agencies consistent with this fiscal year, as well as the discussion of a potential formalized process for funding outside of, for outside agencies. I represent United Partners for Human Services, and we are a membership organization that has a longstanding partnership with both the city and the county, focused in helping to strengthen as well as increase the capacity for nonprofits in our community that are providing services, whether indirect or directly, and of all sizes. I have a number of members here with me today as well as board members. If you want to stand, please do, or wave. I do want you all to be recognized. And after discussions with our membership, the city staff, many of you, we come before you today as a unified voice to request your support in establishing a fair process for any agency wishing to seek outside funding from the city specifically that would not otherwise be eligible for CHSP. Currently, many agencies continue to remain earmarked, some submits proposals and quarterly reports, some do not. Some have active 990s on file, some do not. And UPHS is one of those agencies that does receive outside funding. We submit an annual proposal, we then sign a contract to provide services, and we provide quarterly reports with the outputs based on what is in that contract and based on the funding that we do receive. Some agencies do not. So, any agency that is eligible for CHSP, we would ask that you would funnel them through that vehicle, especially if they provide a direct service, and encourage that they apply that way. Some of the agencies listed on the proposed matrix today provide direct services and are essentially bypassing that process. And by making this an option for one, I just want you to be aware, it might make it an option for others. And by doing so, it potentially puts you all in a precarious situation of having to pick winners and losers in that process as well. So, we ask that you consider setting a precedent of how we handle such instances moving forward specifically for agencies outside of CHSP so as other agencies receive a funding cut, whether from state, federal, or local level, they're not lining the, the path to your doorway and asking for funding in the same exact regard. Again, we're greatly appreciative of the longstanding partnership we have with you all and appreciate being a committed resources, resource to you all as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Morgan Evers and then Emily Brand.
It's Evers. Good to see you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Morgan Evers. I live at 6431 Dancers Image Trail. I'm here standing before you in support of Whole Child Leon. I also work at the Early Learning Coalition, so thank you for our CHSP dollars. But today, I'm standing before you as a Whole Child Leon board member as of the fall, but I have been involved with Whole Child Leon for the last 10 years. I have watched Whole Child Leon grow and connect and do things. So many agencies and nonprofits in our community are strapped with requirements and specific services tied to the dollars. Whole Child Leon is the only place in this city that I can think of that you can go to with a problem and they can come up with a solution. And the solutions that they have come up with, I've watched the last 10 years, almost 1,000 children screened. Those are children from all areas of the community. Two years ago, we were fortunate enough to be able to create the Behavioral Health Navigator Program. Like Courtney said, we've reached almost 2,000 children across all areas of the community. This is not just from one area of the community, it is truly all areas of the community. But I want to also speak to their mission with the professional network, frontline staff. For those of you who have frontline staff, it's very hard to educate and train frontline staff with all local resources because they change so often. That's another component of Whole Child Leon that I appreciate because anyone in the community can send their frontline staff to be educated and trained in the things that are going on locally, and then we're all better trained and educated to serve our families instead of sending them round robin in circles. But also as a parent, I know with my two children that I can go to Whole Child Leon and there are services and programs, and if I had an issue, it is the table that I could go to and say, these are issues in our community and what can we do? And there are people, it has grown tremendously. So, I'm just here in support of them. When you have the task before you to cut budgets, with our Early Learning Coalition budget, we have $25 million a year. I could tell you exactly what would happen if you cut our budget because it's tied to specific services. With Whole Child Leon, $25,000 may seem small, but for an entity that can think outside of the box and use those dollars to connect and coordinate in areas where other agencies and entities cannot, it's priceless. So, thank you for your time and I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Emily Brand and then Lori Dozier.
It's Brand. Good to see you. Good morning.
Good to see you too. My name is Emily Brand and I live at 2654 Millbank Drive in Tallahassee. I've been a lifelong resident of the city of Tallahassee for the last 35 years, and I come before you today in support of St. Francis Wildlife in two capacities. The first being the daughter of the founder of St. Francis Wildlife, who could not make it today because this marks the week of her passing six years ago. So, she started St. Francis in 1977. I grew up with all kinds of animals in the house and everything like that, and obviously she instilled in me firsthand how important it is to care for our animals. But I also come to you as a member of public safety. I'm a deputy sheriff with the Leon County Sheriff's Office, and I can personally attest to many animal calls that the CDA dispatches not only to the sheriff's office and the city, but also to St. Francis Wildlife. I noticed in the objectives that you posted that the first and perhaps most important was to honor public trust through ethical behavior, and I think it's important to remember the ethics of everybody in this city. It's not just animals that St. Francis affects, it's also people. St. Francis has a, a huge effect on things like disease management and control, and also the liability, as Pat said earlier, of people who attempt to go hands-on with these animals themselves with zero training, zero protection, and zero vaccinations to protect themselves from these animals. There was a rabies outbreak issued in Leon County that just expired two months ago. If you come into contact with rabies and you're not vaccinated and you start showing symptoms, there have been, to date, there have been eight people who have survived, eight. So, I think it's an important issue of public safety. And I also want to just bring, I wanted to bring this photo so that everybody could see, these are the talons of a bird of prey, and that is a bare human hand holding on to these talons. This is one of the employees of St. Francis Wildlife. She was not injured, the bird was not injured, the bird was released on Christmas Day because St. Francis works every single day of the year. We don't get days off or anything like that. And that kind of training is what allows us to continue to do that safely rather than forcing the public to incur the liability of possible injuries, possible disease, all kinds of other problems that could stem from that. So, this is not just an issue of St. Francis Wildlife, it is an issue of protecting the citizens of the city, and I ask that you keep our funding at 30,000 for that reason, please. Thank you so much.
Coming to the microphone now is Lori Dozier and then Dr. Holofield.
Lori, good to see you. Good morning. My name is Lori Dozier, 2101 East Randolph Circle. I am on the Whole Child Leon Board and have been since its inception 14 or 15 years ago. Whole Child Leon is, I've watched its entire evolution, but where it has been the last few years is amazing. What they get done to people is amazing in this community. To hear that we're going to get cut $25,000, I may disagree with Board Member Morgan, I'm not sure that wouldn't cost us an employee, not just some extra stuff. I mean, we have two people. When you gave us that extra $25,000, that gave us our second person. This is, your city manager, your opening comments, I think zero to five, we found out touches every single critical thing you mentioned, safety, workforce, everything. We know this is the foundational level. We know our community is seriously considering a services, surgical services council, possibly up to $8 million. Right now, we have 104,000. Right now, we have 104,000. City and county combines $104,000 doing the work that we hope will lead into what the Children's Services Council could do to cut us from 104 back 25,000. And at the movement we have now, it's just, to me, unfathomable. That said, I know you have a conundrum. I don't know how you deal with all these issues because everybody feels like they're at the foundational level. But I absolutely feel like Whole Child Leon is at the foundational level of everything we want to do better in this community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Dr. Hollifield. Morning, sir.
And following him will be Samantha Vance.
Name and address, Dr. Hollifield, in three minutes, please, sir.
Dr. Hollifield, Longleaf Court. First thing I'd like to say is I speak on behalf of all the people who can't be here. When y'all talk about money, y'all have it at nine o'clock on a workday morning. Working class people can't be here. This is the last budget meeting that should take place at nine o'clock in the morning when working class people have no voice, no voice at all, just the big shots. Now, Big Ben cares. Y'all already gave him $1.5 million. Rob Renzi was up here.
Dr. Hollifield, I made comments earlier.
Wait, let me, okay.
Dr. Hollifield, please, just for a second. I'm asking you.
Are you taking this out of my time?
No, sir, I'm not.
I don't have the three minutes.
I'm not taking it out of your time.
I've stopped the timer.
But let me just say, and you were here a little late, that the comments have been getting too personal, both the members of the public and to the board. And I'm asking you, sir, please, work with me in a civil manner to make your point.
Well, when Rob Renzi calls me a liar and puts it in an email, that's personal.
That's not the business before this commission.
When he calls Dr. a liar and puts it in an email.
Discuss that and handle that on the separate.
That's personal. But let me move on. Whole Child Leon, no black men on their board? And they haven't had a black man on a board for years? I mean, black men are marginalized at every level. Tell Whole Child Leon to come back when they have some black men on their board of directors. And they wouldn't even support me in my breastfeeding initiative when I forced almost single-handedly Mark O'Brien to get that infant formula, free infant formula, out of the hospital delivery bags. But let me move on. United Partners for Human Services, a $200 registration fee? Why? $200 for non-members? And then some things never appear in the budget. Tell Asa Memorial Hospital, control of a billion dollars' worth of assets for a dollar a year. Why is that not in the budget? For a D-rated hospital? That hospital is now a public safety issue. After I finally forced a Democrat to say something about it, for a D-rated hospital, you have a 92% increased risk of death compared to A-rated hospitals. Y'all better go down to Mayo Clinic if you can get down there. They got an A-rating for patient safety. We give all this money to TMH, why don't we have an A-rating for public safety? And y'all didn't even talk about it.
You have about 30 seconds.
And infant mortality, nobody said a damn thing up here about infant mortality. Black babies dying at three times the rate of white babies. Maternal mortality, for every 100 white women that die in childbirth, 200 black women die. And nobody's talking about that. What are you going to do, Curtis? Send some more police down there?
Dr. Hollifield.
Is that going to help with all these, but they're just as dead.
This is a very important issue.
And I wind it up.
I'm asking you, please, to keep, and work with me on keeping the personal comments down.
You have three minutes.
Mortality in regard to black women dying in childbirth, they're just as dead as if they had been shot.
Thank you for making your point clear. Appreciate you coming out, Dr. Hollifield. Couple of points. First and foremost, I should have announced at the beginning of the meeting that it was my suggestion to the city manager that we reschedule this public hearing for nine o'clock. It was originally scheduled for 11 o'clock this morning. As you do know, President Sandy Dallenberg's service is going to be held at 2 o'clock at Ruby Diamond. There are many of us that wanted to attend, and so collectively, we decided to make sure we had plenty of time for this workshop, that we would move it up to nine. This is not the final budget workshop. In fact, the budget will not be officially passed until the end of September. We will have a budget, first of all, we have a commission meeting later on this afternoon. And if anybody would like to come and testify at the commission meeting, all comments on the budget are more than welcome. We will also have a budget workshop on July 10th, where we will continue this process. We will have two public hearings in the month of September as well. So for those that could not make the meeting today, that might be watching it on television, let me reassure you as mayor, there is still plenty of opportunity to participate, let alone you can call my colleagues or myself at any particular time, and we will be more than happy to sit down individually, as many of you have already, to discuss the budget and the process and where we're going. So I do want to make sure that everybody is comfortable with why we moved the meeting to nine o'clock this morning and how we will be moving forward, and there's still plenty and ample opportunity to participate. Our final speaker, Mr. Cook, or do we have more?
We have more.
Okay, great.
Seems like for every two to speak, we have one more added, so.
That's wonderful.
Eventually, we'll get there. Samantha Vance is next, and then Paul Mitchell.
Vance, it's great to see you. Good morning.
Good to see you all. This will be very brief. I'm Samantha Vance, 580 Apple Yard Drive, Tallahassee, Florida, 32304. I'm a board member here in support of Whole Child Leon, and I would thank you for considering the words of Courtney Atkins, our executive director. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then Paul Mitchell, followed by Shonda Knight.
Mr. Mitchell, it's good to see you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Your name and address, please.
Paul Mitchell, 3876 West Millers Bridge Road. Mayor, Members of the Commission, thank you for your time. And Mayor, thank you for giving all of us an opportunity through the next couple of months to comment on this budget. I'll tell you, in 30 years of living in Tallahassee, I've never come and asked for money. And I thought the first time I would come, it would be for something for me or for my kids. Today, I'm coming as a board member of Whole Child Leon and asking that you consider maintaining their budget at the same level you provided last year. I joined the board of Whole Child Leon about a year ago, and I'm not going to be redundant and repeat everything that has been said. I do want to mention just how far they stretch those dollars. What Courtney has done is remarkable. I've sat on an awful lot of boards, and I've seen an awful lot of waste. There's none there. In fact, they seem to get an awful lot of bang for your buck. And I'm not here just asking for taxpayer dollars and asking for you all to see the value in keeping their budget the same. I come here as a personal contributor to Whole Child Leon and what they're doing. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Shonda Knight, and then Marcus Nicholas will follow her.
Ms. Knight, it's good to see you.
Good morning. Good to see you all.
Good morning.
I will try to be brief with my comments. First of all, thank you all for the service that you do to our community, specifically your commitment to Whole Child Leon. We know that our children are not just our future, our children are our present, and we have to invest in them and invest in them in a mighty way. I'm proud of the work of Whole Child Leon, being the board chair and being a member of this board for the last eight or nine years, I have seen firsthand the impact that it has on our community, but with such a small budget. And as you heard from Lori and some of our other board members, our dollars are stretched thin already. I want to just share a couple of quick stories because you've gotten the handout of all the services that we provide, but to put some personal components to those. Speaking specifically about our behavioral, our behavioral program for children in our community. I remember being a board member when that conversation first came up, and one of our board members at the time was the director of a local children's services program. And she spoke personally about her experience where her daughter, who I believe was three at the time, was having behavioral issues, and she didn't quite know what to do, so she went to her physician. And her physician, of course, certainly caring, but not having the time and the adequate time to dedicate to that, handed her a packet of resources that she could contact in that regard. She herself, being someone who has an extensive background in children, felt overwhelmed by that process, not knowing where to start in getting the help she needed for her child. You heard the testament about our behavioral navigation program, where more than 1,400 children since that time have been screened in our community to get them the services they need. Behavioral issues are definitely something we need to hone in on, on the ground level. And so that service alone, I believe, warranted. In addition to that, you heard about the developmental screenings. As a journalist for years, we covered Whole Child Leon's developmental screenings, and the children who come through there, parents are at their wits' end sometimes, not knowing where and what their child needs, as well as their, as far as their developmental progress. And that program alone, single-handedly, has helped hundreds of children in our communities and their families to be able to find the services that they need. You've heard that we are not a direct service provider. We only convene those groups and help to get people the services that they need. And without the dollars that the city commission provides to Whole Child Leon, we simply just cannot do that. So I humbly ask that you all consider funding us at the same level that you have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Knight, could you give us your address for the record, please?
Sorry, I was so anxious. My address is 4497 Foxcroft Drive.
Thank you.
Next is Marcus Nicholas and then Tim Center.
Mr. Nicholas, great to see you.
You as well. Thank you, Commission, for having me and city employees. I wanted to introduce you, formally introduce you.
Your address, please.
Ah, sorry. 1113 Woodburn Lane, 32304. I wanted to formally introduce you, the Commission as well as city staff, to ASPIRE, which stands for Accelerating Student Performance into Realms of Excellence. It's a data-driven approach and a collective impact movement to improving educational access as well as success beyond high school for underserved, underrepresented, and vulnerable student population in the Leon, Wakulla, and Gaston area. We align our resources. We leverage our resources and we mobilize our resources in order to provide high-quality, effective, and equitable opportunities that place all students in a region on a path to post-secondary success from cradle to career. ASPIRE has galvanized community stakeholders, many of them in this room right now, and that's government, that's private business, education, and nonprofit. But we don't just convene stakeholders. ASPIRE identifies barriers from that cradle-to-career continuum and initiate projects that address some of the issues that are prevailing. For example, 80% of the students that graduate in Leon County says they're going to college. But when we looked at the data, only 30% was completing their FAFSA form. So what ASPIRE did was we partner with FSU, FAMU, Lively, and TCC to hold a FAFSA date. Nobody brought their branding. We partnered together, and we served families that typically would not have submitted and completed their FAFSA applications, so more students had the opportunity to attend post-secondary education, to attend a post-secondary institution. I apologize. ASPIRE has partnered with Whole Child Leon, and see, this is Whole Child Leon Day. So has ASPIRE, has partnered with Whole Child Leon in its early learning efforts. Leon County Schools and United Way in its K-12 efforts, Capital Source, I'm sorry, Career Source Capital Region, and the Office of Economic Vitality in its workforce issues. Each entity offered a very unique perspective and will contribute to the success to our students and our community. Commission, it's going to take a collective impact to address the achievement gap that has prevailed for years on end. I ask you to invest in an upstart only dedicated to the promotion of post-secondary attainment. That's ASPIRE Capital Region. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Tim Center and then Rudolph Ferguson, Sr.
Mr. Center, good to see you.
Mayor, Commissioners, Tim Center. I'm at 1218 Community Drive, and I'm a member of the United Partners for Human Services. About 25 years ago, I first got involved with this process involving the review of grants on behalf of the county that had an individual grant process and then eventually merged in with the city and the United Way with the CHSP process. And today, you have probably, I would submit, to be the national model for how you coordinate funding for social services in this community. And unfortunately, it seems that every year, a couple agencies will come before either commission and ask for some additional assistance or assistance when they have failed to receive it through the normal processes. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the process, which I believe is well-vetted, review teams of citizens who are going to be coordinated in a process that enables a true review and assessing the needs of the community and the strengths that these agencies can bring. You also have funded directly United Partners for Human Services specifically to assist in building the capacity of those nonprofits that traditionally do not succeed in that kind of model. In other words, you've got new programs that are popping up, that are wanting to be at the table to assist our clients, to assist our neighbors, and they are unable to because of their maturity, of their process. And yet, you fund the United Partners for Human Services specifically to provide that type of skill set. And I am discouraged to see that we provide quarterly reports, we provide you all the information that you need with true outcomes that are measurable, and yet, your staff suggests that we be cut to do the exact thing that you're wanting to do overall. So I would encourage you to, one, restore the funding for United Partners for Human Services. I would encourage you to encourage those new programs wanting services to be involved with the process that you've put in place, and you're in the middle of a two-year cycle right now and to honor that cycle. Thank you.
Last speaker is Rudy Ferguson.
Pastor Ferguson, good to see you, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, and officials. I don't come to you today giving my address, 1430 Calloway Street. My church is 1200 Harlem Street, which is adjacent to Alabama Street, which is all in the Griffin Heights neighborhood. I don't come to you today as a pastor. I come to you today as a resident. I live in that community, got a church in that community, and I work in that community. I represent the Dream Center of Tallahassee, which is a subsidiary of the Frontline Project. And I assure you that our documentation is in order, 990, whatever else needs to be in place. We are a strong support of our community. We don't have an army of people coming to our defense because we don't have a lot of people in our community that may have that mindset. But I stand before you today to say thank you for what you've already done. I've come to this commission on several occasions when John Marks was the mayor, asking for the John G. Rowley Park to be, become a park, and it did. I came when Andrew Gillum was mayor, asking him to help the Dream Center of Tallahassee. And by the way, Dream stands for Determined to Reach Excellence and Motivated to Succeed. We are a direct service agency. We have mentoring programs for our young kids who are coming out of the juvenile justice system, through the JACT system, AMI Kids, and some parents who, majority of our children that we serve come from single-parent homes within the Griffin Heights neighborhood. We are also surrounded by two major housing projects, which is Griffin Heights, as well as the Joe Louis Projects. We serve those children and those families. The Dream Center is a seven-day-a-week entity. We don't close on Sunday. However, I may not be on Sunday because I've got another task I need to handle. But nevertheless, we house for parents, fathers, mentoring, everything that we need. We have already, to date, and we're already to half mark of 2019, have already served already 200 or somehow kids coming from the Juvenile Justice Probation and Diversion Program. Why? Because we serve them for Anger Management 101 and Gang Resistance Education. Now, most may not know exactly what happens in the Griffin Heights neighborhood, but I do. I hear the sirens. I hear the gunshots. And as a responsible resident, not just a pastor but a resident, it is my responsibility to sound the trumpet in our community to say that we can. And everybody can't move somewhere else. Everybody can't move to other places. We have to make good where we are. So I'm asking this body to continue, and I support all the other ones that are here today. However, I stand as a sounding board for the Griffin Heights neighborhood, greater Frenchtown community, to ask you to continue to look towards this way, because it's not often that we've come and asked for money in the Griffin Heights neighborhood, but we do need your support. Lastly, I will say this to this body, is that not too long will be, a week ago, a young man was shot on Calloway Street, wandered all the way into Joe Louis Project where he died on somebody's step. They found him the very next morning, dead on their porch. Not only that, it was a young man who died about three years, four years ago, shot in front of my church down the street where he wandered and fell in somebody else's driveway. Most people in the room may not even hear that or be even concerned about it, but I am.
You have two and a half minutes.
And so I do appreciate that what we're trying to do And so I do appreciate that what we're trying to do is trying to stop our young people from going to prison and hopefully have a way to go into college and becoming someone positive, productive. And who knows? Maybe one day, they'll be able to sit at this table to take on the task that you all have put forth together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Treasure Cook.
I did have one additional speaker card handed to me, Judy Mandrell.
Pastor Mandrell, good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Judy Mandrell, 1911, Chauquibeneen Court. Need to do, I have a bunch of supporters here today, but I do have my chief financial officer here. We do have our 990s. We have, we're with some bids. We are working this community hard as we can. It's on the Dream Builders Greatness Center Incorporated. And so we're here, both since the family affairs, we have, and I want to share this because I'm proud of this. When we spoke last time, people were watching, we had three families to come and ask us to come into their, come into their house to help them with family affairs, teaching them how to relate to each other, to keep the family intact. We're with one way, we're with one child, one church, one child. We're partnering with their reunification process, to keep the families together, to keep them in the home. We're working. I just got an autistic child in my summer camp. Also, Down Syndrome, I am studying now. I got a meeting with autism people so we could learn what to do, how to serve, how to keep these families intact. So we're working hard. Our boots are on the ground. As Commissioner Diane Cott said, and that's what we're doing. We're making, we're in the houses. We're going in there. We're going to save these families. I thank you for your consideration. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. And I wanted to bring her up. She's an engineer with the State of Florida and certified, no, she's not a certified person, she make money work. Okay? And so every dime, every penny is accounted for in our budget. And I just want to thank you for your consideration. I thought I would just put that in the air. And I do want to meet with every last one of you individually to better talk about the program. And Nacyr, CHSP, Pat Holliday, it's on my list.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other speakers?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Before we get into Commissioner's comments, Ms. City Manager, any final comments?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm going to open it up with some comments first and foremost, and we'll have a discussion and we'll go from here. First of all, I want to congratulate staff on a job well done. I mean, this is no easy task at all. If it was, it would be done already. This is also the most important decision that a city commission can make, is passing the balanced budget on an annual basis, and I know that we have all been working really hard. Let me also reemphasize one more time that this is not a final decision today. In fact, the budget will not formally be approved till the end of September, which takes place at the beginning of the next fiscal year on October 1. We do have a budget workshop scheduled for July 10. We do have two public hearings that are scheduled as well in the month of September. So this is an ongoing process, and we will continue to move forward. There is a decision that does need to be made today that I do believe, and that is the millage rate, which is part of the recommended action, maintaining our millage rate at 4.1 and the downtown improvement authority's millage rate at 1.0, just so that we can move forward with the trim process by law. And we can go ahead and give staff ample amount of time to do that. So I want to keep that in mind as we go through this discussion, that we do not need to make final decisions today. We do need to provide more direction. We need to hone in, but we still have time to be able to make these decisions. Now, having said that, I would like to say that I think we're doing very, very, very well. Folks, if you think about it, we have $161 million proposed operating budget. We are spending the majority of our time now down to the last basically million dollars of agency funding, and we have got a delta of about $120,000 in new requests. So here's my position right now. I cannot support today moving forward with the cuts that are proposed to the existing agencies, and I'll explain my position. Every agency that could face a cut plays a very important role in our community, specifically mental health services, those that are experiencing homelessness, wildlife in our community. I cannot vote to cut their funding. I do believe, though, that we should remain flexible in this day and age and keep in consideration new funding requests that specifically target the violent crime that we are experiencing as a community in new ways. Because we all know, we cannot just police our way out of what we face as a community. It has to have a holistic approach. We need to try new strategies. We have to get into the neighborhoods, and we have to engage. And in fact, I am pleased to see the faith-based community stepping up and really trying to make a difference as well. I truly believe that we can restore to level funding as it was originally proposed at the first budget workshop that we had as a starting point. The additional requests that we have, is that owl, that's not a real owl, right? Okay. You've had me all day. I'm telling you, I've been looking at it like, my goodness, that owl's.
It's the owl in the room.
It's sitting very still. I've been very, you just broke my train of thought. I'm sorry. Anyway, get back to the serious point at hand. I would like for us to discuss restoring level funding for fiscal 19 for all of the agencies, period. The three new additional requests that have come in is $120,000, okay? When we look at the process moving forward, we've got several important dates that we'll still be able to discuss. We can still make adjustments if we need to. One of those important dates, let me remind you, is July 1, when the actuals come out from the property appraiser's office, and we know exactly what type of revenue we will be generating this year as well. I am hesitant to make any recommendations for cuts before we know the actuals. And so I think that if we provide direction, and folks on top of that, look, it's $161 million annual operating budget. I think we should give direction to staff to roll up our sleeves and continue on to find the $120,000 above and beyond level funding for the organizations because of our priority of public safety in this community. And I feel confident that we can do it. Our staff is the best of the best. Keeping also in mind the actuals that will be released on July 1, I think that we've got tools that we need to work with. And then on July 10, we're going to have a much better and clearer idea of how to move forward. So when it comes to, you know, a proposed motion at some point, what I would be interested in is, number one, restoring level funding for all of the agency funding. Number two, we direct staff to fund the $120,000 in additional request and to continue working to bring back a balanced budget, keeping in mind the important dates along the budget workshop process that we will be going through. And then, yeah, and to bring back a balanced budget, obviously, on July 10 for us for consideration as we move through the process. And then, of course, we do need to have the formal part of the motion, which would be to maintain 4.1 mills for the city of Tallahassee and 1.0 mills for the downtown improvement authority. Now, the bigger picture as well is that really, we've had two conversations at the same time. Number one is the proposed fiscal year 1920 budget. That's really what the workshop is. But we've also had a great conversation of, after we pass a balanced budget, what do the next couple of years look like? And I have heard my colleagues express interest in looking at the overall system. Why do we fund outside agencies? How does CHSP work? How do we maximize the resources that we have for everyone in this community, and what's the best path forward? I'm looking forward to that conversation. And in fact, I know that after we pass this budget at the end of September, we will begin the new fiscal year with a great workshop on the CHSP process, and we will begin that discussion on how to move forward. I want us to concentrate on the proposed budget, but I would never discredit any comments about how we move forward as well. But anyway, that's where I am. I think that we do have the flexibility. I do think we can find a way to restore level funding for all of our outside agencies, to still take into consideration the additional funding. Now, having said that, no more. I think that we have all the requests in that we need to consider. I don't necessarily, I'm not interested in talking about additional requests at this point in the process, but I'm curious to hear what everyone has to say. Bringing back a balanced budget for consideration and asking staff to dig deeper, to provide that balanced budget, but then moving forward with the proposed millage rates today. Those are my comments. Commissioner Williams Cox, I saw your hand first.
Thank you. We heard another program today. We didn't hear the ask, but I know that Marcus Nicholas is here, and he mentioned ASPIRE. He did not give us a dollar figure, but I would hope that before we shut the door, since he did come and make an appearance, that at least have the opportunity to share what his ask is and to see if that, if this is the way we're going, how that can be added. I just want to make sure we got everything on the table, because we did not send out the clarion call to say, this is it. But if we're going to say this is it, then we need to make sure we have everything that we need to consider, is my concern.
Mr. Mayor, Pastor Tim.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up, because ASPIRE did, in fact, submit a proposal in a timely manner, and I was under the impression would be recommended for funding at a certain level. I was surprised when I didn't see it here in the budget. I'd like for the city manager to address that, because he and I have had several conversations about that. And then, I would also like to question the $50,000 for Work, Education, and Youth Services, which I don't know that was brought before this commission at our last meeting. And so, Mr. City Manager, could you explain to us where that $50,000 came from? And what is this Work, Education, and Youth Services POC?
Mr. Manager.
So if you could address those two issues.
Two questions.
I will. Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor. First question regarding ASPIRE, we did get a request for funding for the program that Mr. Nichols described earlier. I believe the request was for $50,000. We were open-minded to that request, remained open-minded to that request based on your direction today. However, we were not able to make contact with Mr. Nichols by the time, after numerous attempts in time to put this budget, proposed budget out. So that's why I did not make it into the recommended proposed budget, as the mayor's indicated, that the process is not complete. But that's why, that's why you didn't see it today, because we were not able to connect with Mr. Nichols in advance while we didn't have the initial materials. With respect to the program regarding our youth and relating to engaging them for employment opportunities, organizational skills, overall work readiness, since your last meeting, I had a meeting, the deputy city manager, Barbara, and myself had a meeting with Don Tolliver, and he represented many other parties in our community I think we would find credible. He pitched what I've described as a proof-of-concept program that would be large in scale, that would engage numerous members of our community to work with our disconnected youth, that's my term. I'm not sure he said that term, but that's what I heard in the conversation. This is not a program that we received an application on, but I believe it holds promise. And in our recommended budget, we recommended a placeholder to see if it could get legs. Ultimately, the success of the program would be determined by the cross-agency support. Mr. Tolliver indicated that he would seek support from others, like Leon County, Leon County Schools, and other parties that we would be familiar with. And we felt that it would be appropriate if we thought that program had merit, while it may not ever come to fruition, but if it had merit to put it in the budget at this point in time, to give it credibility so that Mr. Tolliver and his colleagues could go and work with other agencies around the community toward a very important issue we have. So that was the logic behind it. You're right, Commissioner, we have not seen that in a presentation to the commission in the past, but the timing was such that it felt appropriate to include it in the proposed budget.
Commissioner Matt Lo. Oh, excuse me. Mr. Pastor Tim, do you have a follow-up question? Are you good?
I don't have a follow-up question, but we'll have some discussion on that when we get to that point.
Commissioner Matt Lo.
Thank you. Just to take a step back, thank you for preparing the budget. I think personally, I like to see kind of a deeper dive. It's hard to get an overall picture of individual department budgets and kind of, not down to the individual line items, but just a better understanding of each departmental budget and how we can present that, both to the commission and to the public, so they know how we're spending dollars. I know the work everybody in this room is doing is probably the most important work we do in Tallahassee. You're not rewarded well for it, but we appreciate your efforts, because that's what, you know, our city's about. It's our community. It was mentioned a few times, but the work you do is so important, it can't be dependent on the process that's playing before us today. You're at the political whim of whoever may be up here, year after year after year. And it's not, it's not fair to you, and it's not really fair to the people that you serve. So I'm going to be in favor of maintaining funding for this year, but I'm going to insist that we move towards a different process. There are many new agencies, and I think the work they're trying to do is fantastic. I think we need it in the community. There's people who have come by my office, Mr. Marcus Nicholas was one of them, to pitch his project, and we told him, this commission needs to find out what the process is for you to come. So I don't think it's fair to the people in this room or to the people outside of this room who have been waiting to know what the channel is, and we're just deciding on a whim. I do support your project. I think ASPIRE would be, it's something our community needs. But I guess what I'm getting at is, your voices would be a lot better utilized if you came collectively and were asking for an increase in funding for social services, rather than come individually fighting over $10,000 or $20,000 or $30,000, because that's not moving the needle in our community. We're maintaining funding of exactly where we're at, and we can get ahead. And what you're going to see happen, there'll be more people who come for funding, more people come for funding, and all of a sudden, everybody's getting some funding, but nobody's able to deliver on their mission. And that's not good for us, it's not good for Tallahassee. So I'm asking everybody here to work with us as we develop a new process, because if we're in the same process next year, I'm not going to support funding for any outside agencies. Like, we need to find the solution. St. Francis has a lot of vocal supporters, and I think if you've ever found a baby squirrel and tried to call around town and find out who could help you with it, you always end up on St. Francis. I think they're in a unique position, because I think that's kind of an essential role we should be fulfilling as a city. Wildlife, injured wildlife needs a place to go, so I'd hope we could see that worked into maybe a department budget of a service we offer, so it's not something that comes up year after year for a line item. Through whichever department would make sense, I think that would be, I'm good. So for today, I'd like to, for this year, since we don't have time to get a well-vetted-out process in place, I'd like to support maintaining funding, support the agencies that have requested, including ASPIRE, and then go into the next meeting.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several questions. Let me start with the one to ask, is there a comparison between the budget expenditures by expense category? And let me tell you why I ask that question, is if we budget $500 for personnel, I'll use something way outside the bounds, but we only spent 200, and there's 300 left on the actual expense line item. Is there a chart, and maybe I missed it, I was trying to review again my material, that would tell me if, at the end of a budget year, we have expended funds as they were budgeted, or if fund transfers occurred, what they might have been? So that's my, I'll let you address that first.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, we do look on a line item basis of budget versus actuals. How we represent that and try to communicate that in a transparent and open manner is by bringing back the quarterly updates. We do that at a fund level to give you a quick understanding of where the fund exists, but behind the scenes, we are looking at, on a line item basis. One of our tools that we use to communicate to the public and share with you and your aides is OpenGov, where on a monthly basis, we publish the actual expenditures. It's relative to the budget expenditures, and that's something that we need to do a better job of communicating, how to use that tool, how it's available. better job of communicating, how to use that tool, how it's available. I do have to say that it has saved us immense amount of time in the questions that we used to give, to get through public records requests, that now we see that communication coming through that OpenGov site where somebody searches for what food expenditures we have, for what services we're providing in parks from a contract perspective. And so, we have the framework for that. If there's a specific need or request that we can bring back in one of our agenda items, we'll be glad to do that.
Robert, let me add on to that too. Commissioner, I think it's probably helpful to also know our frame of mind in budgeting. We have numerous enterprise funds that are built around revenues and fee basis. Electric would be the easiest to think about, and while we do have approved budgets, to the extent revenues, which tend to be less, not more, rarely will you find yourself in a excessive revenue situation, govern or throttle our expenditures to the extent they can. Personnel expenditures tend to track very well for what we project, right? That's, that's a pretty constant given, those things are set, and then you move forward. Operating expenses more are discretionary to some degree, many of them are sticky, but department directors have some discretion. But I'll give you an idea of what we're working with this year, and I believe Robert explained this a couple of meetings ago. The general fund, which is the most focused upon fund, expenses, to really to answer the question you have, the expenses are trending less, the operating expenses, than were budgeted. However, revenues are even less than that. So what we, what we are working toward the end of the year is spending less than we have budgeted to make sure that we don't spend more revenues that we have, which would put us in a deficit position. So we're very mindful not to just spend to budget, and we don't only want to look at what we were budget relative to actual because ultimately, we can only spend how much money we have. So I just wanted to share that with you, and that's a, that's a conversation we're having more and more because revenues tend to be soft. In our general fund, our revenues, we know ad valorem property tax represents $47 million of our $160 million need. That's not that much, so we're dependent upon other revenues we don't have a lot of control over. They tend to be declining, not, not holding the line or increasing. So I just wanted to share that thought process as well.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that, and in fact, you have explained that to me before. But let me just follow up by saying that in the budgeting process, and I understand this takes us almost to the end of the year because we're constantly in the process of looking at where we are, revenues that have come in versus what was projected, and versus what we, how we thought we would spend the dollars. But as we sit here today and we talk about an overall budget and funds that are available for projects such as we have heard about today, my question really is not necessarily the quarterly updates, although I appreciate that, but as we approach the end of the year, we should have some sense of with two more months of projections, and the city manager gave me a good example, last time we were talking about water and, you know, the like of people using, but now everyone's using water because it's so hot. So obviously, things happen that we have no control over. However, in projections, I just believe we can at least have a better idea, maybe it's just something I need to know, that at the end of the year, we look at what in fact was the budget, what were the revenues, how did we expend, even if we take the overall general expense allocation and expenditures, not by line item, and make, at least provide that information. I'd be interested in that. Second question.
And Commissioner, if I can add to that.
Yes.
At the end of the year, we do bring to the commission a closeout report.
Okay.
That closes the fiscal year, usually comes around December because it takes us a couple of months to close all the books out, but you will see a closeout report that shows where we ended the fiscal year and what's gonna be happening with their surpluses or deficits in those funds, how they're treated in accordance to our finance policy.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up to Aspire and then the new project. Are there other projects that have come to you that we don't know anything about? Other projects, we talked about Aspire this morning, proof of, the proof of concept program, I think. Are there any other programs that were submitted that receive consideration but we don't see on this list?
No, ma'am.
Let me just say, and I'll conclude my comments with this, I think, and I said it last time, it is imperative that we have a process that does not bring us to this budget hearing and have projects presented. I think that it is imperative that we have a way to, whether it's through the CHSP process, but some process where funds that are allocated, we have some goals, objectives, quarterly reports, and accountability measures such that we can better understand the success of the program as the program provider has stated that that was the expected outcome. That would help us tremendously with allocations of funds. So I, and I agree that we can't do that today, so we need to at least start, if not today in our next meeting, somewhere along the way of determining what that needs to be. All of the programs are important, I want to say that. Everybody brings a mission, everybody's attempting to accomplish their vision, and it's all good for the city of Tallahassee. We don't have unlimited funds, so we need to develop a process that actually will help us to make good decisions. So those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. I have the mayor, Pro Tim, and then Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, you know, this is the fourth budget that I've sat through, and this is always the most difficult part of it. But let me say, you know, everyone who has presented, everyone who we're recommending funding for does a tremendous job for this community. The work that they do is extremely valuable, has a positive impact on our community one way or the other. In an ideal world, we would want to be able to fund every project that comes before us, but this isn't an ideal world. You know, we're recommending a 4.1, to hold at 4.1 millage rate with the increase in revenue, that's what, about a million and change, Mr. City Manager? And so, we have very difficult decisions to make when it comes to the operation of the city, because that's our, certainly our first and foremost responsibility, is providing services to the citizens of this community as a city. And so, that's first and foremost. And, you know, then we certainly have to do that within a balanced budget. You know, we can't, we're not like the federal government. We can't spend beyond our means. And so, except then that comes to, you know, very difficult decisions that we have to make as to what we will fund and at what level. I guess, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would want to fund all of these programs at the funding level that they are currently, but the question I would have, and we talk about making a deeper dive, that deeper dive may impact services that this city is required to provide. And I certainly don't want to see that happen.
Correct.
That we consider cutting personnel or cutting services in order to fund outside agencies. I would never want to see that happen. If there's a way to make it happen, Mr. Manager, if you can bring us back that recommendation, I would love to consider it. But I could not, I could not support cutting essential city services.
Correct.
If that's what it takes to fund all of these programs. Now, the work, education, and youth services at 50,000, I have a concern about that because that's something that has never been brought to us. It wasn't something that we considered at our last meeting. And so, I have a problem with that 50,000 having no recommendation at all, no proposal even to consider. Now, with Aspire, I can tell you, we had that because I personally delivered it to the city manager's office for consideration. I personally gave a contact number to Mr. Nicholas, so I don't know what happened there, but it was my, and I've had that conversation about funding for this organization on a number of occasions, so I don't know how that didn't make it into the budget when there was a, an appropriate request made. But we have to have a process for how we address these issues. That's what brought us to the Community Human Service Partnership process because we were going through issues just like this. And that is a process that works, it has worked for us. I think any agency here with, with the funding year, the two-year funding cycle beginning again next year, any agency here that we fund outside of that process, we ought to encourage to be a part of that process, maybe go through the United Services for Human Partnerships to get the kind of training and information that they need to be a viable organization to compete for those Community Human, Human Services Partnership funds. But I, like Commissioner Matlow, am very interested in seeing St. Francis get their full funding. They provide a tremendous service to this community in terms of, and it's, and it's not something that the city of Tallahassee provides necessarily. And that was one of the reasons we increased their funding was because they provide such a valuable service that we don't provide as a city. The Hope Community is another one that without what they do, the city would be responsible for those services. If we, and the Hope Community serves families who are experiencing homelessness. I can't imagine that we wouldn't want to fully support a program like that. And then finally, for me, would be the Domestic Violence Coordination Council. That's just one that's, you know, from a, from a public safety perspective, I certainly would want to see us support those initiatives in the community. So that's, that's where I am on it. These are always very difficult decisions to make. You know, every organization, I think, in terms of what they do is worthy of funding in an ideal world. I would love to be able to fund them all, but we're not in an ideal world, Commissioners and Mayor, and we've, we've just got some tough decisions to make in terms of how we move forward. But I certainly would like, Mr. City Manager, if not now, because I think we have a pretty accurate estimate of what our revenue is gonna be. That's been the case in the four years that I've been here so far. It hadn't varied very much from what we estimate. But, Mr. City Manager, if you are in a position this morning to address that, I'd like to hear it. If you think that we can take a look at, I just don't want us to get down the road to our next budget hearing and we're where we are today because we hear the same thing. We've got an estimate, it hasn't changed, okay, what decisions do we make at that point?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Commissioner, I'll respond to that. And let me just frame, I think, the dollars, and, Mr. Mayor, if you'll bear with me, you indicated that, and I'm gonna answer your question with this, Commissioner, that you thought the three new requests, or the kind of the two new and one partial would be 120. I think it's 105 net, as $15,000 is funded currently for the Dream Center, so I think it's 105 net increase. That does not include the request from Aspire, which we've not been able to fully vet, and I was speaking off the cuff in terms of the requested amount, I'll park that. But the three programs that you mentioned, Commissioner, total $22,475 if we funded those at 19 levels. So with that kind of being the frame and the parameters, the way we would work to try to fill that gap between now and July 10th would be, we are always optimistic for new revenue. We will get a final cut of property tax, a final estimate for property tax July 1st. I doubt it's a whole lot more than it is today, but we're always hopeful. So we would look for new revenue. We would also scrub the other revenue line items to make sure that we could identify revenue. But I have to be honest, Robert's pencil's pretty short at this point. He sharpened it a whole bunch of times, and, but we certainly would look for that opportunity to fill any gap with new revenue. So that'll be the first place we would look. We would look at reserves, and if we felt it was appropriate to recommend the use of reserves on a non-recurring basis. And we would also look to see if there's any program changes. I mentioned to Commissioner Bryant earlier that personnel costs tend to be pretty steady. Those are the easiest to estimate. Our approved FTEs at 2,851 have been pretty constant. We've got a good handle on healthcare cost, pension cost, so I wouldn't expect any deviation there. So we would look to see if we found any programmatic savings. That wouldn't be harmful, as the mayor indicated, through the reduction service. So that's kind of the inspection we would do. Clearly, the larger the number, it's probably unlikely you'd fill it totally with new projected revenue because we do tend to have a pretty good handle on it, but, but that would be the first place we would look.
Well, and I think there's also other things to take into consideration, like, for instance, Dr. Bryant, you made a very good point. Over the past five years, at the end of the fiscal year, how much money have we swept out of every single account of general revenue, out of our operating budget? And what is that trend? I do disagree. I do think that the estimates that came in last year from the property appraiser's office were a little conservative, and I do think that it was a little bit more money than what was expected. Not to say that that's gonna happen this year, but let's wait until we get the estimates in before we have a final say on what that's gonna look like. Let's revisit the reserves. Are we at 8% for two months, total of 16% on every single reserve line, or are we a little healthy here and there? At the end of the day, we're talking between anywhere from $75,000 to probably $155,000. I am confident that this incredible staff can help bridge that gap, balance the budget, restore funding for outside agencies. All I'm asking for is just give them a little bit more time and come back in July 10th. Hey, I am not opposed to making really difficult decisions on July 10th, but we still have time in the process, and let's see what we can do. Commissioner Williams-Cox, Commissioner Matlow.
This has all been very informative and very educational this morning, and our staff has done an awesome job, but as we know, each dollar is precious. And so, given a solemn principle, how do we split this baby? Is there anyone in the room who is willing to just forego so that we don't have to split this baby? The answer to that, I'm sure, is no, because everybody believes that you're doing what you need to do to move the needle. And I'm not saying that you're not, but at some point, we have to understand that there is a limited amount of dollars without impacting essential services are coming back to the citizens asking for a change in millage. So we're, we're gonna, right, we know that's bad news. So somewhere, we're gonna have to figure out how to split the baby, and, which is the solemn principle, for those of you who are watching who may not understand that, go Google it. We.
Poor baby.
Yeah, poor baby. We, we have an obligation to serve our residents even before age zero, from conception on. We have, we have a responsibility to do that. And so, in order to do that, we have to divvy up these precious dollars, and I, for one, do not want to send a message that in order to do that, we've got to go find money in the essential services to give everybody what they are, have grown accustomed to having. Now, I will say this as well, and I want to say this as gently as I can say it. We're a new commission. We've been here since November. Some of you have come and shared with us your requests and your concerns, some of you have not. Now, I'm gonna take credit that from the last meeting, some comments that I made gave you the urgency that you needed to come meet us. Now, I've worked in state government, a lot of places where, you know, you have to deal, you have to do a lot of stuff to get money from across the street. One of the things you One of the things you have to do is that you have to show up and ask for it. And I must say that, until the last meeting, there were agencies and individuals that we had not met. And even today, we're just getting information on some agencies and entities, because we still didn't get a chance to meet with you prior to today. So, we do need a process. But until we get a process, the process that has been followed is this process. And I don't want to sit here and listen to us say, oh, we're already in, but anybody else who might be needing to come in, you need to look at them through this lens. Well, how did you get on the list to be the person to tell us that we need to look at new entrants in a certain way? We don't want to create barriers, because everybody's doing what they need, what they feel they need to do to try to help us keep our community whole. So, we do need a process. And we said that at the last meeting, that we needed a process, so that's not a newsflash. We already know this. But right now, we're in the process that we inherited, and we're asking questions of those of you who have received this funding. Now, I do have a question, City Manager.
Yes, Mayor.
I understand that for Whole Child Leon, the $25,000 was a one-time request for a study. When was that?
Mr. Lavin, can you help me with that? But there was $25,000 added to the appropriation for Whole Child Leon for a study, so that was non-recurring, that's become essentially a ratchet in that funding level.
And I believe that was two years ago.
Okay. So, two years ago, we, well, the previous commission approved a $25,000 one-time, non-recurring, $25,000 for a study. And then it apparently has become a part of their budget. Was that something that they came annually and asked for, or was it just a rollover request?
I believe it's just been a rollover.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond to that?
Mr. Manager.
Commissioner, just in general, you see some of that theme in this outside agency funding, where there will be a very specific request for a very specific effort that may be non-recurring or time-limited, but it does have a ratchet effect on the level of funding moving forward. I've heard a discussion about a process, a transition, doing it differently. I think that that's part of that need, because that does happen, that the agency does become dependent upon that level of funding, even though the original intended funding purpose was non-recurring or time-limited.
Okay. Thank you. I too want to make sure that we make St. Francis wildlife whole, because they did come in, and they came, they talked to us, helped us to understand, they provided a report of what they're actually doing, and I am actually familiar with that. And there are others that I can support as well, but I do not want to send a message that we're going to go find money other places to give everybody what's listed here, when in many cases, they haven't even asked for it. They haven't even asked for it. Previously, it has just happened. And so, I guess no fault of their own, they didn't know they needed to come ask for it. But for those who have come to ask and be included, I think we definitely need to look at that. And we need to look at, again, putting boots on the ground to deal with our most urgent needs right now. We have a community that is under siege from gun violence, unemployment, poverty, that we have been talking about forever.
Dr. Holdfield.
And a number of other things. We have got to do something different, because what we're doing ain't working like we needed to work. And so, if this exercise does nothing more than let agencies know that you need to help the community understand what it is that you're doing for our good, then this process is succeeding for this year. But we cannot continue this way, because, again, we're trying to pick winners and losers, and we all need to win. So, I am, right now, where I sit, I am not in favor of going to find other money to fund everybody where, at the levels where they were before, when they haven't even asked for it. They may not even need it. The other thing is that we have a placeholder in this year's budget for $100,000. Y'all remember that? For a purpose bill in the 19 budget. We don't know if we're going to ever need to use that. But I would say that if we do not use that, and that is a rollover from fiscal year 19, that might be a place to find some money to help fund some of these programs. And then we'd have to look at something else when or if Purpose Bill happens here. So, those are my comments for consideration. If you need money, you have to, well, you have to ask for it. That's what I have to do if I need money, I have to ask for it. And so, if you don't ask for it, don't expect to get it, because we don't know you still need it. Thank you.
Coming to Commissioner Matlow in a second. Real quick, let me also make sure our good friends in the media understand that I do not believe any of us will be providing a motion to provide directions to cut any essential services. We are talking about outside agency funding. This is always a difficult part of the budget process, but I want to make sure I am very clear, that no one is suggesting that we cut essential services at city of Tallahassee. Okay? Commissioner Matlow.
Second that. But I do believe, look, every budget has places that you can cut and still deliver the same level of services. You know, I think we've seen it throughout, I mean, throughout last year. I mean, there's PR firms, communications firms. I'd make the argument, we overpaid our state lobbyists last year, so we need to find out where we could tighten up our bootstraps to make sure we can deliver what we want. Commissioner Williams-Cox, I think, laid out some priorities that I think are priorities of our whole community, so not just for what we're doing here today, but looking where we can save money so we can address the issues that matter to our community. I agree, Commissioner Richardson, on the proof of concept. I haven't seen a presentation and don't know what that line item really is. So, I would recommend going into our next meeting, not cutting funding at this point, but requiring an official request with a proposal for what the money is from everybody on the list, because there's a lot I haven't heard from yet, too, and some I don't know exactly where the money is being spent, and we're being asked to make that decision. So, before July, I'd hope they'd officially reach out to us with an ask. So, I'd make a motion that we currently hold restoring funding and allowing the agencies that presented Aspire and the new agencies that presented at our last meeting, give an opportunity for everybody else to make a proposal, and then see what we get when we get back in July.
Would you be willing to include in that motion, go ahead, the formal aspects of maintaining the millage rate at 4.1, and then the downtown improvement authority?
Can we do that? Can we do those separately?
Yeah, I think that has to be done separately.
No worries. No worries.
Yeah.
It doesn't, based on the recommendations, but I'll be more than happy to do that. That's not a problem.
Yeah.
Commissioner Matlow, will you restate your motion? I'm sorry to confuse it.
So, going into July, we'll officially request a proposal and an ask from all the agencies listed here, including Aspire and the new agencies that have requested thus far. Bring that back to our next meeting. With that full request amount, and then we can decide individually if other people haven't. If we want to make cuts and changes at that point, or if individuals just don't respond, we'll have a better understanding of the final ask.
A quick question. Do we need a motion, or do we need, does that just, is direction we give staff?
No, I think it's appropriate. I'll second the motion now, we'll go into discussion. I think it's appropriate.
I don't know that you can second. I'll second the motion.
No, I can second. I can't make the motion, but I can second the motion.
Okay, all right.
I think that it's appropriate to give a motion with formal direction.
Okay.
Moving through the budget process.
Okay.
And so, if I understand the motion, I ask you to clarify as well, is that you're going to, that we're providing level funding for the agencies as presented, and to include in the proposed budget for now, the additional presentations from the previous budget workshop and Aspire.
With a request for an official proposal.
Sure.
An official proposal would have to come back to be included in the next.
Absolutely. Commissioner Williams-Cox, and then Commissioner Bryant.
I have a question. Because the work education and youth services item apparently has been submitted to the city manager, I would want to at least include it as a placeholder, which is precedent, that we've held placeholders until we can get more information regarding it, because we're not at the final budget stage, so we might as well have all in right now and deal with it as we go through the process.
Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, I'm including everything that was recommended in this budget, in addition to Aspire, and then moving into the next meeting.
Perfect. Great. Commissioner Bryant, Dr. Bryant.
A point of clarification. Are we asking all of the outside agencies to submit a request? I'm trying to clarify what you're asking. Hopefully, that has already been submitted to the staff. And if not, that they would submit it for our review, such that we are better informed for our next commission meeting, is that right?
Yeah.
Our next budget meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Great.
Further clarification?
Sure. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I want to be crystal clear, because that's a lot. So, are we really just asking for those agencies, the new agencies who have not provided? Because these other agencies apparently have been on the list a long time. And so, somebody knows something about them. We may not know it all, but somebody knows something about them. So, are you really asking for all of these folks to submit information, or just the new ones that we have not received?
I'm asking for any agency that's getting outside funding that hasn't requested money officially for this year to do so.
Okay.
For staff purposes, if I may, then your expectation would be that from 25 or so, however many are listed here, you would receive a request. Staff may have already received that from a number of them, but to the extent that they have not been received, or that they are new requests.
Correct.
Then that would round out that group, and you would have information on each of them, whether previously provided or between now and the next meeting.
Absolutely.
And I think that should be included in the agenda item for the public to know who's requesting and what they're requesting it for.
Okay. Wonderful. Mr. City Manager, you want to restate to make sure we are all on the same page for the motion?
Just for clarity, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, very precisely, I would expect to have 28 formalized requests.
Correct.
For funding. That would include the new requests that we've discussed tonight, or this morning, actually.
They won't, will they?
I'm going to stay with it, which also includes the Aspire program that we do have the request for, and we're already in receipt of that. We need additional conversation with Mr. Nicholas. So, very precisely, I would be hoping to see 28.
Yes, sir.
With that direction, in the absence of that formalized request, we would not include them in the budget on July 10th.
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And the direction you have provided us is that you are comfortable with the fiscal year 19 approved levels for the existing agencies, an increase to the Dream Center, as previously requested, funding for the proof of concept work education and youth services program, funding as described for the Dream Builders Family Affairs program, again, consideration of Aspire, and no cuts to essential services to fund these efforts. We will first look to new revenues, and then look for other places that we would feel comfortable recommending to fund these from. That's the direction I've heard.
Sounds good to me.
Send a motion in a second. Any further comment? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Excellent. Mr. Vice Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to make a motion in regards to the millage rate?
I will. I would move, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt a millage rate of 4.1 mils for the fiscal year beginning October 2019. And 1.0 for the downtown improvement authority. I didn't know if you wanted to make them together or...
Would you like them together or separate, Madam Attorney?
Separate.
Okay. So, the first motion on the table?
And for clarification, this is a tentative millage rate.
Tentative millage rate for...
Millage rates approved in September.
Right. Correct. Of 4.1, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further comment? Seen none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 5-0. The mayor pro tem.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt a tentative millage rate of 1.0 mils for the downtown improvement authority for the 2020 fiscal year beginning October 2019.
Properly seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Any further comment? Seen none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. This has been a great budget workshop. If it was easy, we would be done already. I thoroughly enjoy working with each and every one of you. Any further comment from staff? Robert, yes?
Commissioners, we did want to take the opportunity to make one amendment to the 2019 budget. We have some undesignated bond balances that we want to apply to a current project, and so we ask for an amendment to be approved for that capital project.
Robert, can you bring that for us tonight at the city commission meeting, so that we can actually see numbers and know what we're talking about, and let's modify the agenda, Mr. Manager, and put that on our commission meeting for tonight?
Has it been announced?
Yes, sir. Of course.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Excellent. That'd be great. Any further business? All right, folks, we'll see you all at 4 o'clock this afternoon for the city commission meeting.
All right. Great job, Mr. Mayor.